Good morning. So we're convening the Committee on Human Services Thursday, April 11, 11:00 AM in room 329. Welcome everybody to our last hearing for this session. So we have five measures on the agenda resolutions. And the first up is SCR 177. And it's requesting the Department of Budget and Finance to work with the State Council on Developmental Disabilities to enhance the ABLE savings program by promoting it to all individuals who may qualify. And we have testimony in support on Zoom from the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Is Deentry with us? Please go ahead.
Thank you. Deentry Bartolos, Executive Administrator for the Hawaii State Council on Development to Disabilities. Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, Committee members. We are in strong support of this resolution. I'd also like to add in that Budget Finance, we've been talking with them. The director is very supportive as well. We've been meeting twice a month for the last couple of years. And this is something very near and dear to us. And yes, so we are very strongly aboard. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And thank you for coming every time to support this issue and its various forms. We also have testimony and support in writing from the Executive Office on Aging, Hawaii Disability Rate Center, La Ni Kila Pacific, and one individual. Is there anybody in person who would like to testify on this measure? Oh, come. Go ahead. State your name, please.
Aloha, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES, in strong support of the ABLE Account Savings Program. The Achieving a Better Life Experience Act of 2014 allows states to create tax advantaged savings programs. Funds from these 529 ABLE accounts can help designated beneficiaries pay for qualified disability expenses. Distributions from ABLE accounts are tax-free if used for qualified disability expenses. ABLE accounts allow people with qualifying disabilities and co-occurring medical conditions. Those who are experiencing health disparities and are marginalized and have disproportionate effects when it comes to medical equity, it allows them to save money without losing state and federal benefits. Money saved in ABLE accounts does not count against asset limits in federal programs, for example, the SSI, Social Security Financial Assistance from the federal level for disabilities program, and also Medicaid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, next measure is SCR-
Chair, can I just make a question for Deentry?
Of course.
Deentry, I just wanted to follow up because I know this is really important for you. And thank you for all of the advocacy that you're doing on this ABLE savings program. Is there also communications, I believe, with Department of Education in ways in which to help get more information out about this to very special needs folks who might be able to qualify for this?
Yes, thank you for that question. Yes, definitely there is. We've been working very closely with the Department of Education. Annie Kalama, I met with her last year, I believe it was, and we created bookmarksers to be put in the libraries about it. We still have worries to go with that. And that's something definitely during the interim that we'll be talking more to DOE about. We really want to make it a part of the individual's education program, the IEP, and to make it a well-known. So that is something definitely we're working on. Other states have done such things. And that's something definitely that DOE has been nodding when I've talked with them. Yes, this is important. That's something definitely we'll be working on. Thank you, Rep.
Thank you, Ms. Bartolos. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Any other comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next measure, which is SCR 175, requesting the Department of Human Services to report on the cultural and therapeutic services provided by community-based organizations at the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center. And we have in-person Partners in Development Foundation. Oh, yep.
Aloha, my name is Melissa Pavlicek. I'm here today on behalf of the Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii HUI, which includes Partners in Development Foundation, Residential Youth Services and Empowerment, and Kinei EHA. And I believe we had a burst of enthusiasm on our written testimony. So you have many versions of who we are from OYA. We advocate for reducing the negative effects of incarceration on youth. And we strongly support this measure. And thank you, Rep. Martin, for introducing the host version and hearing that one as well. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. We also have possibly on Zoom, do we have RISE? Carla?
Aloha, can you hear me?
Yep, thank you.
Wonderful. I support this measure and I stand on the written testimony. And should there be any questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much for being here. And then finally, one individual, do we have Homaia, the last caller on Zoom? Please go ahead, Homaia.
Hi, good morning. So thank you for allowing me to speak on SCR 175. And as a member of the Opportunity Youth Action Hawaii HUI's policy team, I've had a chance to work with the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center and can vouch for the efficacy of their methods. So avoiding the cycle of incarceration for youth is critical for building generational success. And Kauai Loa offers a very unique, very unique chance for opportunity youth to avoid that path. And through utilizing Hawaii's unique culture, providing healing instead of punitive actions that directly target vulnerable populations, we can empower youth instead of shutting the door on their futures.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to testify on this measure? Oh, yes.
Aloha, Committee, Angela Melody Young, testifying on behalf of CARES. So the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center is for at-risk youths that are vulnerable, marginalized, who may not be able to transition at a normal level into adulthood. Success can include academic success and job readiness, as well as the ability to be financially independent. So because of the disadvantages that at-risk youths experience, they are not at the normal, regular level in the race of life. So policy needs to help out the marginalized youths. So Hawaii Youth Correctional Facility is a peaceful setting for a juvenile correctional center. And it is going through physical and spiritual transformation to become the Kauai Loa Youth and Family Wellness Center, and to realize a new vision for the Hawaii juvenile justice system. All the kids who go to the youth correctional facility experience poverty, wealth disparities, abuse victimizations, as well as drug addiction and mental health issues. By affording them support and a real opportunity to succeed, we can prevent them from ending up in adult criminal justice systems and cycling through recidivism and incarceration. And so the Office of Youth Services proposed a 2021 bill to engage in business enterprise to create locally and sustainably produced beef. This will enable the youth to learn business management and gain practical, marketable job skills, training for workforce development, while receiving professional mentorship, supportive services, and a living wage. I think that by creating the equity in policy, this will improve the quality of life for at-risk youths. And it will help marginalize and stigmatize youths to reduce recidivism and incarceration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this bill? Members, are any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next measure. This is SCR 156, SD 1, urging Congress to take immediate and decisive action to support middle and lower-income households in America. And we have no testimony that was submitted prior to the hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to testify on this measure? Seeing none, we'll move to the next measure, SCR 166, SD 1, reaffirming the state's commitment to providing culturally appropriate resources, services, and programs for native Hawaiian individuals and families experiencing intellectual developmental disabilities. And we have testimony in support from, on Zoom, from the Hawaii State Council on Developmental Disabilities. Go ahead, Deentry.
Thank you so much for hearing this. Deentry Bartolos, Executive Administrator for the Hawaii State Council on Development to Disabilities. We are just really excited to be working with the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. OHA, they have been very supportive in looking at health disparities and gaps in services for individuals with intellectual and developmental disability who are Hawaiian. This is something data has been missing. We really don't have access to, or we can't find data that shows what the needs are. So we've been working very closely to see what, how we can support this vulnerable population. Thank you so much for this opportunity to testify and strong support.
Thank you very much. Next, we have in-person, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Michelle McCoy for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. We stand in support of this measure and stand on our written testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming today to be with us. Next up, we have also in-person, the Department of Education. No, not here. Okay. And we have also written testimony in support from the Department of Human Services, the Hawaii State Department of Health, and Aloha Care. Is there anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Okay. Members, are there any questions or concerns? Nope. Okay, moving on to our next measure, our last one, SCR 207, SD 1, requesting the auditor to conduct a social and financial assessment on mandating dental and vision insurance coverage. We don't have anyone testify to sign to, there's no one signed up to testify in person. We do have some written testimony in support from the Disability and Communication Access Board. Is there anybody wishing to testify on this measure? Seeing none, we are going to recess for decision-making. All right, reconvening to vote for our Human Services Committee. So our first measure, SCR 177, on the ABLE savings program, my recommendation is to pass it as is. Vice Chair for the vote, please.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SCR 177, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair both vote aye. Representative Bellotti.
Aye.
Representative Illegon.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi excused. Representative Takanuchi.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto excused. Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Our next measure, SCR 175, is asking DHS to report on the amazing cultural and therapeutic services provided at the Kauai Loa Youth Family Wellness Center. And again, my recommendation is to pass as is.
Voting on SCR 175, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Chair, Vice Chair both vote aye. Representative Bellotti.
Aye.
Representative Illegon.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi excused. Representative Takanuchi.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto excused. Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, SCR 156, SD 1, urging Congress to support middle and lower-income households. Chair's recommendation is to pass as is.
Voting on SCR 156, SD 1, noting the excused absence of Representative Nishimoto and Kobayashi, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Are there any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no?
No vote.
No vote for Representative Garcia. Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, SCR 166, SD 1, which is on providing culturally appropriate resources and services and programs for native Hawaiian individuals and families that happen to be experiencing intellectual developmental disabilities. The, in the current form, the resolution has us urging ourselves to do something which doesn't make sense. So I'll change the language just slightly on page three, lines 11 through 17. Instead, urging pertinent state agencies to provide those services and technical amendments for purposes of clarity, consistency, and style. With that amendment recommended, Vice Chair, please take a vote.
Thank you. Voting on SCR 166, SD 1, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Reps. Nishimoto and Kobayashi. Are there any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, we have SCR 207, SD 1, asking for an audit on the mandating dental and vision insurance coverage. And Chair recommends to pass as is.
Voting on our final measure, SCR 207, SD 1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any members voting with reservations or?
Reservations.
Reservations for Representative Garcia. Any other reservations or no's? Thank you, Chair. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, well, this is our final hearing. I just want to thank my Vice Chair, Amato, for her hard work in keeping us organized during these hearings, and to all the members for showing up and providing your input. Much appreciated. We are adjourned. We are adjourned.